Public hearing to order, would the court please read the role for the public hearing?
Mr. Amrane?
Here.
Mr. DeLeon?
Here.
Mr. Farrar? Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer? Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner? Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. Turner and Ms. Schaefer has to be excused.
Excuse.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
This is the second of two required public hearings for the city's program year 2019 in Community Development Block Grant Program. This community has an opportunity to comment on the proposed action plan, which lists the projects that the city is proposing to complete in the next year. These projects are geared towards the benefit of low to moderate income households. The city has finally received word on the exact allocation amount, and that amount is going to be $283,165.
There any questions from the audience? Seeing none, public hearing adjourned. We've got a couple of minutes before we-
Five thousand.
Before council meeting. Does anybody want to talk to council on their public communications, must sign up at the court. Order, would the court please read the role?
Mr. Amrane?
Here.
Mr. DeLeon?
Here.
Mr. Farrar?
Here.
Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. Turner and Ms. Schaefer has to be excused. Is there a motion to do that?
Second.
Second. By Roger, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. DeLeon, you have opening remarks?
I really have no opening remarks, just please stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a motion for the regular council meeting, the joint meeting.
I'd like to make a motion for the regular council meeting, April 17th, 2017, and the joint meeting with Franklin Township Trustees on May 1st.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, I'm gonna alter tonight-
Abstain, can you hear it?
Pardon?
Abstain.
One abstention. I'm gonna alter tonight's agenda, and I'm gonna move up the committee as a whole before we get into the communication. We're, our presence of- President Beverly Warren is going to tell the good things she did here, and she's gonna, we're gonna say adios and- Good luck, and retirement looks good, so the podium is yours, young lady.
Thank you.
Do you want the microphone? Yeah.
I'll wait to make sure everyone can hear. This is the first time I've been at a podium to everyone's back, so- Thank you for your diligence to turn around. I do want to say thank you so very much for this opportunity. I've addressed city council on a number of occasions over the last five years, and I think it's, it's been one of the great experiences for me because it is so emblematic of our partnership and the work that we do every day together with the city of Kent State University. I thank you for your patience in that I wasn't able to be with you the last time I was scheduled, but I had no voice, so I would've had to just stand and smile and hope that that would've been enough, so thanks for allowing me to come tonight. And this is a night for me to say predominantly, "Thank you." From day one, you have made me feel right at home as a citizen of Kent. You have demonstrated such desire to really do something special in what we have come to shape as a destination city with a destination university. And we are the envy of many across the country for the way that we have pulled together for what is best for our community, so I'm really pleased with that. When I think about our five years together, we certainly managed to accomplish a number of things. As I think about it, one of our top achievements was certainly the transformation of Summit Street. Now, that was three years of pain. Rerouting traffic, the students were quite frequently letting me know how they felt about that rerouting of traffic, particularly in the summer. But what we now have is a beautiful Summit Street that is much safer for our students and for the residents of the city of Kent, and I think that's emblematic of what we've done together. We've also done some very tough things together. I remember our housing study, and we were really frank and honest about what our potential in our city was for growth and development, and I thought that we had frank conversations, and that's another thing that I will take away as a real highlight for me, is that we haven't shied away from really challenging each other to think through issues and to work together to resolve those issues. And so I think with the housing study, it was the first time we saw a consultant say, "You can expect a downturn in the number of students who will be attending college in the future," and sure enough, we're seeing that. But we're also, I think, addressing it very thoughtfully as a community together. It brings us challenges, but it also brings us opportunities to think through strategically how we address the progress and growth of our community. I think as we chart the past five years, we've also looked ahead for the years to come, and that came through a really thoughtful process of our new master facility plan, the Gateway Plan, and you helped to craft that and create that, and I think that's another example of our work together. The citizens of this community really spoke up about what their ideas and insights might be the result of that. Examples of, "Please preserve Captain Brady's, it's a historical icon, we are doing that." "Please preserve the Williamson House because it is a legacy of history of Kent State University." As we thought of transforming Main Street, the concerns were, "How will it alter traffic?" And we've worked so well together in terms of doing some traffic analyses that we'll be very thoughtful about that process. There were concerns about a parking deck that would land on Main Street, and how would that affect the local community, and also how would it affect traffic patterns? And from our work together, we moved that concept of the deck further off of Main Street so that we wouldn't have so much of an impingement for the citizens who live in and around the Main Street area. We were rerouting the traffic, so I think we can show so many examples already of the work that we've done together. The innovation zone that is going to be a part of the plan at Lincoln and Main Street, we're leaving that as a wide-open discussion of what would that look like, and I'm so pleased, Nick has called it "a bridge to downtown." How would you take the bridge from the Esplanade and really encourage movement downtown and retail that would make sense in a non-competitive way, but in an allied way? So, we're so looking forward to that future discussion, and I think that we will continue to be those great partners together. I wanted to thank Nick Gattosi, Kelvin Berry, Todd Kaminish. I think that one of the things we've tried to provide over the five years is a central portal so that the city and the residents of the city, if you have concerns, if you have ideas you want to share, that we've provided a portal of entry into a very complex university, and so we've worked very hard at that. And I think we've had three individuals who have been good listeners to the concerns. We were always, with 28,000 students who transcend on us every August and depart about this time every year, it changes the nature of our work, and it certainly creates joint opportunities for us to help develop the citizens of tomorrow. And that requires patience, diligence, acceptance of responsibility, and certainly clear, clear communication. And so as I think about our work moving ahead, there's so much optimism, and I know that all of you are aware that we now do have a president-elect and our current provost, Todd Daikon. And I think you will find that Todd's belief in a town-gown relationship is very, very strong, as Todd made remarks even in his initial announcement. Many of you might've been there, but he really began talking from the Lester Lefton days of how the work of the city of Kent and Kent State University came together for the revitalization of downtown, and he was so impressed by that and was really a part of that team. And then as we've moved forward in thinking about the work together post-revitalization, and how do you continue to be optimistic about your future, and I think Todd will be a good partner. I also want to thank city manager Dave Roller. Dave served on the Presidential Search Committee, and I think that's an affirmation of how much the Board of Trustees really respects and believes in the strength of a town-and-gown relationship that must always be one of tight collaboration. And so Dave, I think this is your third president that you've selected? So, Lester great, Todd's gonna be great, you know, well, we'll see how you think about that middle president that you brought into the midst, but I think that's really also emblematic of the value we place in the relationship, and certainly we appreciate the time and effort you committed to being a part of that process. And I think I'll just conclude with, I have bitter, bittersweet emotions about my departure, and particularly as we're looking at the 50th commemoration of May 4th in 2020. This is an opportunity for, literally, there will be thousands of visitors to our city, and we should be prepared for that, and I think that will require some conversations of, how do we look at this very, very thoughtfully in a year-long commemoration, but certainly on the May 3rd, 4th weekend? We will have, I think, a very, very large presence of visitors in our community. I think we should also look at, how do we honor all voices? Not everyone has the same memories and the same emotions about May 4th, 1970, and the idea is, how do we, how do we work together to honor all of those voices? And how do we honor the fact that we've grown from 1970 with some fairly strong tensions between university and the city to something that I think is a very, very tightly-knit relationship today? And I think that's one of the opportunities to commemorate that and to share that with the world, because I think we have worked very, very hard to come together for the best of the residents in this city. So I'll stop there and tell you that it has been a joy of a lifetime to be a part of this community and to serve Kent State University, and I thank you for your support, and I thank you for your partnership. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would ask Jack Amrane to make a motion to authorize draft number 201952 a resolution. Jack?
Yeah, I'll move authorized draft 2019-52.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We do have a resolution, I'd ask the court to read the title.
A resolution recognizing the leadership of Kent State University's President Beverly Warren, Ph.D., E.D.D., and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amrane?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by, Mike, did you second that? Is there any discussion on adopting this resolution? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amrane?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Okay, it passes with Mr. Rule, would you like to read-
Yeah, you're probably wondering what it is they just said about you and approved that, so, we don't necessarily normally read the full text, but in this case, we are happy to do so. And the mayor said he would normally do it, but he's not sure he can read the small print, so I said, "I'll do it, I'm happy to do it," and hopefully my eyes will accommodate this. So, "A resolution recognizing the leadership of Kent State University's President Beverly Warren," and I'm not gonna read her Ph.D., E.D.D. every time, because her credentials, we all know them, are very long and very impressive, so just, I'll skip those throughout the document. "Whereas Beverly Warren became Kent State University's 12th president on July 1st, 2014, and whereas, under her leadership, the university embarked upon a system-wide, community-responsive, and inclusive process to chart a bold and distinctive future for Kent State University. The six-year plan, a strategic roadmap to a distinctive Kent State, is a result of this effort. And whereas President Warren's vision, commitment, and tireless work ethic elevated the nationally-recognized town-gown relationship between Kent State University and the city of Kent. And whereas the Honorable Mayor and members of Kent City Council and Kent City staff are grateful to President Warren for her dedication and contributions to the Kent community, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Kent, Portage County, Ohio, at least three-fourths of all members elected thereto concurring..." Do I need to read all this stuff too? Okay, section one, "That the Kent City Council hereby commends President Warren on her leadership at Kent State University and her commitment to higher education and community building during her remarkable career. Section two, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and all deliberations of this council, and any, and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and compliance with all legal requirements of section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code." I don't normally read this stuff, you can't tell. "Section three, that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city, for which reason and other reasons manifest to this council, this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure and shall take effect and be enforced immediately after its passage." And I'm happy to say, the mayor anticipated a positive vote, so he's already signed this, it's been sealed, and do you wanna, so-
I'm coming back to ride in the parade.
Anytime, honey.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sure. I think your job is safe for reading those, you don't have to worry about the-
Take care.
Okay, now at this time, we'll get back onto the agenda, as would the audience's participation, would the court read the first name on it?
Christopher Myers.
Wait a minute, Chris, I gotta read my thing. When law does not require council to provide time for public comments, we have historically invited the public to make comments, and we appreciate their input. This is a time when residents and others can comment on matters that concern them. However, we do not engage in debate, and as president council, I reserve the right to end any public comments that is disruptive, embarrassment, harassment, or otherwise objective. We ask that, when you come to the podium, you speak into the microphone, that you clearly state your name and address for the record, and we limit you to three minutes. Mr. Myers?
My name is Christopher M. Myers. I live at 220 East Elm Street, Kent, Ohio 44240. My phone number is 330-678-6984, if anybody here or in the audience would like to talk to me about things that I am going to discuss this evening. Valerie Reisman misquoted me in her Statehood article about me. She said I used the word "asinine" to describe council members who wouldn't take his landlord's concerns seriously. I did not do so, I used it to describe a statement by Councilman Ferreira. She said she would change it. That's item one. Item two, people around town ask me why I was labeled as vulgar when I used the asinine word, but when Councilman Robin Turner used it, he was not. Perhaps the city has an official rationale for this that I can share with the public. Item, I was told that Mayor Fiala was accused by Tara Grimm, former clerk of council, of stalking her. Perhaps the city might want to investigate this, or better yet, the record carrier. Item, why does city manager Roller report to the clerk of council? Why did he turn me in for protesting when he knew not what I was protesting? Item, almost two months ago, I requested some city records. Today, I have received nothing. How about it, Director Jones? I came down here and spoke of Lincoln and Dr. Martin Luther King. I also spoke of the fascists, the Stalins, the Hitlers, and the Francos. Clerk Grimm wrote in the minutes that I gave an oration, that's all she said. Nothing about the high ideals of Lincoln or Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., just that I gave an oration, and that's why I have a terrible time dealing with Clerk Grimm. And I think that you might want to look into this, because I have great records, I have all my emails, I have all the minutes of the meetings, and the lies and distortions that you people tolerated are manifest, and it's really not very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further?
David Ellingsworth.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
I am David Ellingsworth, I live at 1082 Graham Avenue. I'd like to address the council this evening on the issue of feral cats and animals throughout the city of Kent. I was looking at the city ordinances, and I see that the ordinances say that we, as property owners, may kill or injure any feral animal or domestic animal that trespasses onto our property. However, that's in section 505.05. However, in section, in codified ordinance, one second, 505.11, we are not allowed to trap any non-domesticated animals, so therefore, these two sections are kinda in conflict of each other, because if we set out a trap and we happen to catch a non-domestic animal in that trap, even though we release it, we are still in violation of section 505.11. However, that, and the state of Ohio says that as a property owner, we are permitted to do so, except the city ordinance says otherwise. So, I would request that the city ordinance, in regards to trapping, be amended so that property owners or occupants of a property may trap animals so long as they are released, uninjured, unless they are domestic animals, in which case they may go ahead and kill them in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And-
Further?
Yes, Angela Gerald's.
Same thing we need. Not allowed to release raccoons.
My name is Angela Gerald's, address is 1060 Davie Avenue, Apartment A, Kent, Ohio 44240. I am also here to speak on the issue of feral cats in the area. I have been working in cooperation with Marla Dunn and Ron, our animal compliance officers, to legally trap and either turn into the APL or to dispose of properly of these animals. The biggest problem we're running into is that no amount of TNR and no amount of euthanasia is going to stop if we do not start persecuting people who are promoting the problem. We have at least six neighbors, I have photo evidence of them feeding, sheltering, but not physically caring for these cats. They almost always test for feline leukemia-positive. We also have some very small infants that we can't even let play in our yards because of the risk of the toxic diseases that cats transfer, one being, sorry, I'm not great at public speaking. The toxoplasmosis, which is only found in domestic cats, and it is transferred through cat feces. Most often, cats do not appear sick until weeks and weeks later, so there's no way for us to visually diagnose these cats, but that if your infant child were to be out in the yard, grab something that has come into contact with the cat feces, that it is almost deathly, it is, to an infant under the age of three. And I'm very concerned for not only my own children, but for my neighbor's children, for the gentleman's child who was back behind me speaking, he lives a road over, we actually ran into each other on the way over here. I am not an animal hater by any means, but TNR has not proved to do much for the cat population, other than prevent them from repopulating. They don't necessarily not pass disease still, they are also still able to carry rabies even after they are vaccinated, and the only surefire way of making sure that these animals do not massively reproduce as they are now is to euthanize and control the people who are promoting them. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Further?
That's it. That's it. No, I only had three.
All right. Written communications?
The Civil Service Commission meeting agenda for April 29th, 2019, received on April 26th, 2019. Planning Commission staff report and meeting agenda for May 7th, 2019, received April 30th, 2019. Standing Rock Cemetery meeting minutes of April 11th, 2019, received April 19th, 2019. Sustainability Commission meeting agenda for May 6th, 2019, and the minutes from March 4th and April 1st, 2019, received May 2nd, 2019. Liquor license transfer request from La Pizza LLC, 25 West Main Street, first floor, Adena, Ohio 43901, to River Merchant 911 North Manaway Street, Kent, received May 1st, 2019. Chiefly returned, no objections to that transfer.
Need a motion?
I'll move to return with no objection.
Second. Second by John. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you.
And then, after the agenda was published, we received the agenda and staff report for the Board of Zoning Appeals, public hearing and business meeting for May 20th, received May 13th, and from Carrie Oris, professional clinical counselor. Council received a letter asking for support of legislation to ban conversion therapy for youth, as 15 states and Washington, D.C. have done. And received today, the letter of intent of retirement from John Idony.
Okay. City managers' report, Jack?
Yeah, I'd like to move what, items one- Oh, I'm sorry, items two through 11 on the city manager's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mike. Garrett, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, Community Development, Mr. Kuhar?
Yes, I would move to approve the committee meeting minutes of May 1st, 2019, and-
Separate him, separate him.
And action number one.
Second.
Second. No, he has to, she has to do the minutes.
Break the minutes for me.
Let's back up, John-
Move to approve the minutes.
All right.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on the mess? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
One abstention.
Okay, I would move action number one.
Second.
Any discussion on action number one? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would move action number two.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on action number two? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Would the court read draft number 201953 in title, won't we?
201953 is an ordinance amending sections 353.02 and 353.03 of Part III Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Kent to implement the proposed overnight parking permit program and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrane?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call, oh, Mr. Kuhar.
Yeah, I think this is a move in the right direction for the, well, the way the city is turning, and I think we're going to have to spend considerably more time now finding solutions for the, for some of the problems that are going to be happening with all the downtown building and apartments that are coming in, so we're right, right at the game, so if we stay ahead of it, we'll be okay.
All right, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Ordinance 201953 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201954, entitled only?
201954, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or is designated to accept the proposed revisions to the neighborhood grant program, NGP, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Ordinance 201954 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201955, entitled only?
201955, a resolution approving a request for community development block grant, CDBG, assistance for program year PY 2019, under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, including the PY 2019 Annual Action Plan, and authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute and file the PY 2019 Annual Action Plan, including related certifications, and upon awarding of the grant, authorizing the appropriation of funds, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
New adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Resolution, 201955 passes.
That includes community development.
Thank you. We'll move in the finance committee, Mr. DeLeon.
Yeah, I'll move the committee meeting minutes of May 1, 2019.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuhar. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
One abstention.
I'd like to move both actions recommended. Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Is there any discussion on the actions? Seeing none, all in favor, the action, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. With the court read draft number 201956, entitled only?
Draft 201956, an ordinance amending Section 135.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Kent, titled Assistant Directors' Appointment Duties and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ordinance 201956 passes.
Thank you. With the court read draft number 201957, entitled only?
201957, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2018-142, the current appropriation ordinance passed December 19, 2018, so as to adjust appropriations, transfers, and advances from the various funds of the City of Kent to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 201957 passes.
Thank you. With the court read draft number 201958, entitled only?
Draft 201958, an ordinance accepting a donation in the amount of $2,400 to the City of Kent Parks and Recreation Department from the Henry V. and Francis W. Christensen Foundation, to replace the projector used for the sidewalk cinema blimp screen program, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuhar. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ordinance 201958 passes.
Okay, that's it. Finance committee, there's nothing on their health, public safety, land use. Mr. Farrar?
I just moved to approve the committee minutes of May 1. Second. And the action recommended.
Can you split those, please?
Sure. Just approve the committee meeting minutes of May 1. Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
One abstention.
Move the action to authorize the updates to the 2008 Sewer Service District. Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Sedoti?
Yeah, I'd like to move the meeting minutes of May 1.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
One abstention.
I'd like to move the four actions that are listed.
Second.
Any discussion on the four actions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201959, entitled only?
201959, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into an amended agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC, formerly known as AT&amp;T Wireless PCS, for the continued location of its cellular antenna and equipment on the Kent City Water Tower located at Kent State University property, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by John. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance 201959 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201960, entitled only?
Draft 201960, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or is designated to accept a non-exclusive easement from the state of Ohio, DAS File Number 3180-A-2, on behalf of the Kent State University, for the expanded use of a permanent easement for the AT&amp;T Cell Tower, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Ordinance 201960 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201961, entitled only?
Draft 201961, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into a new bike-share memorandum of understanding between Kent State University Department of Recreation and the City of Kent, to establish a bike-share system for a one-year period, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Ordinance 201961 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 201962, entitled only?
Draft 201962, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or is designated to approve the participatory legislation for the state of Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, Project Poor State Route 59, PID 110168, for the repaving of State Route 59 from River Street West to the city limits, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrane?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Ordinance 201962 passes.
Okay, that's it, the streets are sidelined, is there any special committee reports from anybody? Seeing none, unfinished business, is there anything? Mr. Sadoti?
Yeah, I'd like to, I think this falls under unfinished business. Another year has gone by since last year's Kent Fest or Heritage Festival, and we still don't have anything to put in front of our citizens in regards to at least a concept for a new city hall. And it would seem to me that as a council, that I'm kind of surprised no one else feels upset about that, that we've gone a whole year without really having anything to show to our community. We've had some meetings with the architects, we have a, we spent how many hours on a bus to get some ideas? We have shared those ideas with our architect. It just seems to me that, I hate to see another year go by, and we're going to be sitting here a year from now, and we still don't have something where we can begin to engage with our community as to what the city hall should be about, how it should look. To me, I feel that's unfinished business. I think it's a business that we have, and I don't believe it's our administration's fault, I believe it sits right here with us people sitting around this table because we haven't challenged ourselves, we have not set up a systematic way of, if not every meeting, every other meeting, talking about where are we at with the city hall? And when we don't engage with that, I think people lose confidence in us. I hear people all the time saying, "When are we going to tear down the old police station?" The answer is, "Well, we have a design for our city hall." Well, when are you going to have the city hall designed so we can take a look at it? The answer is, we don't know. So I just think that as a council, we have to own this, and we have to say, how are we going to systematically begin to at least narrow into a city hall? I mean, we've been planning forever, and it hasn't happened. So I don't know which, where you want to take that, I'm just as one person, I don't know if the rest of the council feels the way I do, but I just think that we don't want a Taj Mahal, we don't want to be in a gas station somewhere, holding council meetings, an abandoned building. What we want is a city hall. And another thing, while I'm at it, we had an opportunity, when interest rates were low, to save the taxpayers tons of money. And you and I both know that as the years go by, the interest rates are going up, and we're going to have to borrow some money. We're not going to go to the taxpayers if we can help, at least I won't vote for that, but we're going to have to borrow some money. And the longer we take, if you've been watching the economics, the longer we take, the more it's going to cost this city and these citizens. So all I'm saying is, is that I have a deep level of frustration that nothing is happening. Nothing is happening. It's not happening in a way that we can say, let's have a timeline and let's try to continue to have a dialogue about this particular process. So to me, that's unfinished business. That's business that's been laid in front of us for a while now, and we haven't done anything with it, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mike, did you have comment on this?
Yeah, I was just curious, when is the police station going to be tore down? That's like the start of the beginning.
Right, so Melanie is here tonight, she'd give you the, probably the most current, because I think you said yesterday, you and I talked yesterday about you were getting the bid ready to go out for the police station, and just if I can take a minute to respond to Roger too, that we're going to try to help that, I won't say force those decisions, but we're going to give you, because there wasn't an obvious unanimity, and because we were getting, I like the building, I hate it, I'm okay, I'm not so okay, we weren't getting much consensus from council in general, and we didn't ask for official vote, I mean, on the early draft, so we were getting a lot of different stuff. So Melanie and I met with the architect and said, "We got to help council get to the end zone here," and doing that means maybe physically drawing kind of the representative position, things that people said they liked, but other people didn't like, but give it an image to it, and then kind of give it back to you guys in June, I think, I think so, next month. We are supposed to come back with some different looks, as well as the original look too, that's been going around, you know, being developed throughout this process, so that you can then say, "I don't like this, but I like this, I'm going to vote for this," and you guys can kind of get, try to, I think, get what Roger is, get to where Roger is asking us to get to. We've enjoyed, we've welcomed a inclusive, open, iterative process, but I think, and Melanie is, believe it or not, she sounds a lot like Roger when she's in privately with me, saying, "I got that timeline," and she's got a very specific timeline in her head, and I've said, "You know what? I'm getting too much feedback from all over, I'm not getting consensus, so I don't know what to tell you, Melanie," you know, and so that's why she's like, "Well, what can we do to hurry this up or help this along?" And it was, well, all right, let's show some different images, and in essence, not back you into a corner, but kind of make you make decisions, or give a stronger direction, if not a final decision, if that makes any sense.
Mr. Kuhar? You know, I think when this whole thing started out, we took an awful lot of time, and I think it was good how the inside of the structure was going to function. So we made the inside, you know, functionally agreeable. And I think where we ran into the problem was, whatever that thing was that they put in front of us was horrid, and I think most of the people thought it was horrid, and at this last meeting, I felt that there was a very good consensus of things that, you know, combined people would like to see on the outside. And so from that step forward, I think that they should bring us back something that's acceptable. I mean, it's the visual part of it, and I think things could move a lot faster then. But I think we spent an awful lot of time, and that's good, because I'd hate to see a five or $10 million building be put up, and we left out everything because we were in a hurry. And, because I'm a deep planner, you know, when I build things, and you know, sometimes it takes longer than I want it to, but when I build something, it's, I got to like it because I'm building it. When they're putting something together, they got a whole bunch of people got to like it, and that's a little more difficult. But I think we are moving forward, and I would rather wait a month extra and have something that's going to work for all of us than rush it through and find out that the desk doesn't fit in the closet. I was going to say, I heard June, next meeting? So maybe by Heritage Festival, we can have some concepts down at the Heritage Festival, I'm thinking. Am I thinking wrong?
No, I think you're right on.
All right. You know, part of this problem, we, the architect comes, Melanie has a good presentation with the architect, you know, and we're sitting there, and we start second guessing ourselves after we leave the meeting. I mean, I hear it should be this, it should be that, but nothing was ever said when the architect was here. So I think that's part of the problem.
Mike? Just, and another thing I've noticed, we're trying to cram all this stuff in a half hour, which it really doesn't help, you know? If we want, maybe we should plan a little longer meeting, you know?
Yeah, no, we absolutely, you know, we take responsibility for that.
It's hard to do that, like, coming here at 6:30 for, we have a seven, and it's a lot, just for the architect to come here and try to cram all that stuff into our little pea heads here, you know? Well, I do.
Roger?
Well, I would agree, you know, one of the hallmarks of this city council is that we can disagree all the time, but we're not disagreeable. And, but if we don't engage with one another like we do many times, whether it's in executive session, when it's a critical issue that can't be public or whatever, but when we engage, we hear one another, we understand one another, but we don't get that opportunity with this particular project. We have yet to sit around in, whether it be in a special meeting or a planning meeting, to really understand what John's concerns are, or to understand what Jack's concerns are, or understand what my concerns are. We have not done that. What we have done is we have, we have called Melanie, or we've, you know, we have called Dave, or we've called the mayor, or, these are things that I'm kind of hearing or getting an idea that we've done, when we, I don't know that you have specific issues with it, you don't know what my specific issues are, because we have 30 minutes, and we never talk to one another about what is it that we want to see, and how can we come together, and that's what the hallmark of this council is. Everyone admires our council because we can come together and work these things out, and get something out to the public, and they may tell us that we're all nuts. Well, that's okay, but at least we have something to start with, and we get the feedback directly from the majority of the people. That's all I'm saying. I think that the process at this point needs to move forward, and I agree with John, you have to plan, but when it becomes dangerously slow, and we're beginning to see windows close on financial opportunities that we have to save this community money, I begin to get frustrated over that. Because we all sit here committed to try to do the best by the taxpayer, and so that's the short game, and sometimes we've narrowed down that, and we don't realize that the long game is what's really critical, that we can leverage our, the fact that we are virtually debt-free, we can leverage our wonderful bond rating, we can leverage all of those things that we are in envy of to other communities, and we're going to lose that opportunity if we don't get, move, and I'm not saying, make the decision tomorrow. I just don't want to see another year and we don't have a city hall. It's that simple. And, so, you know, I think it's time that we engage in this conversation. I'm done.
Well, I'll take it. Melanie, can I ask a question? You say you're about ready to go out to bid? Does that mean the asbestos abatement has already been done, or is that the first step?
That's the first step, that is the first step, we have to do that. I was trying to work something out, but it's over on Downey Street, but that's not moving at that, so.
All right. Thank you. All right, any other unfinished business? Roger?
These are easy.
Roger, let me make this perfectly clear, this is not the Bowman Breakfast.
I know, I know. Well, she isn't here, I can't pick on her. No, strike that. No, I think that, I think hope is not here, but our conflict that was brought up, I think that's something that, you know, if there is a conflict in our ordinances, I'm not sure, you know, hope needs at least a look at that.
We'll certainly check on it.
And you know, the feral cat issue, we had a big, big feral cat issue in southwest Kent, and it was huge. And I know people were trapping feral cats, and they were taking them to the pond. I think that that's an issue, the feral cats is really an issue, and it gets worse and worse, and I'm an animal lover, I would love to, I would be one of the people who would try to domesticate a feral cat if I had the opportunity, my wife would kill me though, so I can't do it. It's the, yeah, yeah. So that's something that we need to at least, at least take a look at.
You know, we went over this subject, when was it, Jack? Maybe 10 years ago?
No, not even that long. Two or three years.
We had public input and all that, we did this once before, but I understand getting the ordinance to say what they're supposed to say.
Well, we had an organization that was sterilizing.
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to put the feral cat subject back into committee to coordinate the two ordinances so that they work together, and also when we do that, to notify the two residents that were here for that, and also to notify the people that do the TNR also, because they're the ones that came before us before, and that's why we made the resolution before. But it didn't, it didn't, it conflicted with our ordinance, and I've had residents talk about the confliction also, because one of the compliance officers says one thing, and the other compliance officer says something else, so we need to get those so that they link up.
So you're making a motion?
To put it into committee and discuss it.
The second by Roger, we're in motion right now. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Boo, same sign, Roger, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Actually, we have, it's called animal hoarding, which is feeding cats outside. Right now, we have nothing built into our ordinance to address that matter, but we have three or four incidences, and I actually have it on my list to get to you guys. We were just, actually Paul and I, and Eric were just talking about it yesterday, because it's a little, there's two issues, there is the conflict in 505, but there also is a matter of basically for property maintenance, code enforcement. We also have to hit it with civil fines with regards to people that don't have pets, but they are putting food outside, which is creating the issues that we have. So we have that, and we will be, I mean, August or September, so I'll make sure we get it to you by August.
Okay. Glenn?
I would just like to say that I'm glad that the issue came up, but it's also an environmental issue. Feral cats are responsible for killing over a billion songbirds annually, and with declining populations for some indigenous songbirds and birds that migrate through this area and are possibly using our watershed or Cuyahoga River, I think it's actually an environmental issue, so I'm glad that it's going to be discussed.
I would agree.
Okay, we'll be talking about it. Is there further under unfinished business? Mr. Kuhar?
I think that was unfinished business.
That's where we're at, are you on that?
Well, as I say, I've said before, I don't want to get into this committee meeting, but I personally paid to have 35 cats neutered, feral cats with traps, but as far as the conflict, I might not be correct, but I thought that the no trapping and hunting in the city limits was not nuisance trapping, I thought it was for hunting, for fur-bearing animals and stuff like that. So maybe we ought to get a clarification.
Good point, Joe.
If nuisance trapping is forbidden. And another thing that might take into consideration, when you start looking at the ordinances, you are not allowed to trap, you are not allowed to trap a raccoon and let it free. So that's, you're not going to, you're not going to catch a cute little raccoon and let it free, that is a violation of state law.
All right. Tracy?
This is something different, are we done with this?
Yeah, we're going into new businesses.
Okay. What was that one letter that you read about the camps?
Conversion therapy for youth.
What was the request on that?
Asking for council support of legislation to ban it, causes untold emotional harm to individuals, violates code of ethics of the American Counseling Association.
Okay. Would anybody like to put that in committee, or can we just make a motion to write the resolution? Does anybody want to go in committee?
I think it's ridiculous.
Do you think it's not ridiculous?
So I'm sure if we're on a conversion therapy is trying to.
Transgendered.
Right, it's trying to make.
Right, convince them that they're not what they are.
Right, exactly.
More for a motion.
Yeah, me too.
Make the motion.
Take the motion, Tracy.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to whatever it says.
I'd like to know what it is. Yeah, I kind of like to know more about it.
Conversion therapy is sending kids to camps that try to change their minds of whether they're gay or they're transgendered, and try to talk them out of it, and try to counsel them out of.
Not counsel, not necessarily.
Well, not necessarily, but they, it's a bunch of hooey, yeah, yeah.
I think we're stepping in an area we have no business in. Is there a second to your motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Now, Tracy, you have more discussion?
No, it's been by many spiritual leaders and religious leaders, it's been seen to be a very harsh and damaging process to young people, and I think that we should stand against it.
All right, Glenn, you're next.
It's, gay conversion therapy is a debunked scientific, faux-scientific method, primarily used in populations that are looking to suppress and forcibly change the nature of a human being in terms of their sexuality and their gender orientation. It can be, it can be violent, it can be abusive, it often involves minors under the age of 18, and it is, I personally consider it a form of child abuse. As far as I know, we don't have anyone in the city of limits that is currently practicing that, but I support it because I would like to prevent it from occurring here. I think it does terrible damage to a vulnerable population that we've already as a council agreed to protect.
Anybody else? All in favor of Mr. Kuhar?
I guess I don't totally understand what we're asking to do, but from what I do understand, it doesn't sound like it's any of our business to do that. So enlighten me, I guess, of what we're trying to accomplish.
It's, what we're trying to accomplish is a ban on people trying to forcibly change through unproven, unscientific practices, kids who are gay into straight, kids who are transgender, basically trying to change the nature of people, but it's not a legitimate scientific practice, and so it's tantamount to abuse.
These doctors, psychiatrists, what?
That's who's asking us to. Ban it.
Yeah.
Could you read the?
Would you read the?
The letter?
The letter again, yeah. I'm doing way too much reading tonight. Dear City Council, I am writing to ask for your support of legislation to ban conversion therapy for youth. I am a professional clinical counselor in private practice in Kent and have served the community for more than 17 years. Conversion therapy, which is therapy designed to change someone's sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, remains legal in Ohio. It is a sham therapy and is not supported by the American Counseling Association, premier professional counseling organization in the country of which I am a longtime member. Conversion therapy does not work, causes untold emotional harm to individuals, and violates the code of ethics of the American Counseling Association. Conversion therapy has been banned in 15 states and Washington DC, and the counseling community continues to work in support, sorry, to support legislation at the state and municipal levels to ban this discredited practice. I ask for your support to pass legislation banning conversion therapy for youth. Doing so will save countless lives today and in the future. Thank you for your time.
So are people bringing their children to licensed or medical doctors and that for this procedure, or, I mean, I've never heard of that.
It's a fringe, it's a fringe practice where somebody puts up a shingle and says, "I'm going to change your gay son or daughter into a straight person," and they're a minor under the age of 18, and it's, that's why I consider it a form of child abuse. So you've got somebody, you've got basically some form of quackery where they try to get
So they're not degreed in any way, they're just somebody that says they can do that?
It can, yeah, I mean, it can be that, or it can, but it can be perhaps somebody that operates on a fringe.
Also a number of suicides, I think, by young people that are being pushed through this.
It's a vulnerable population that are, that are being targeted because specifically of their orientation.
So we have these shingles in Kent?
As far as I know.
Like Greg?
She says she believes it.
As far as I know, we don't have anybody practicing it, yes. In Kent, this is a preventative measure, that that is, that this is an unscientific
But they're asking for, with the letter, what we're saying is, we're going to tell the legislature, we do not support that, or we support banning the conversion therapy in Ohio, where it's been.
We want to ban it.
Right.
So there's, if there's legislation that comes through, warrant support of that legislation banning it, that's what we're asking. I, by the motion, correct, Tracy?
Roger?
Well, any one of us right here could set up that camp. Not one of us needs to have a license, not one of us needs to have any kind of medical background, not one of us needs to have anything that even resembles a certificate of psychological studies or anything. Any one of us could set up a day camp during the summer, as long as we abide by the minimal requirements for health, sanitary issues, anything that we want, and then if parents want to send their kids there, knowing that we are going to try to beat the snot out of them to get them to change their gender, then that's what we're trying to stop. It's one thing if a trained psychologist, someone who is degreed and is a doctor, is working with a kid who's confused, I can remember lots of those kids at the high school, I remember having parents signing off on letters to allow the doctors to talk with us so we could help young people. That's not what we're talking about here, we're talking about just camps that kids are sent to, and basically, they're as bad as anything you can imagine in terms of either being, you know, just like you being held against your will, and you're being, I hate to use the word tortured, but you're being basically abused to, and they believe that that's going to break your gender identity, or it's going to, it's like smoking, if you go to a smoking camp, they're going to beat smoking out of you, they're going to do things that, to try to convince you that smoking is not that good. It's just a sham practice. It's, if Carrie Ors wanted to run this camp, I would say she would be the perfect person to work with kids, but not the sham things, you know, it's, they're just did not, they're not licensed people.
So we're not, we're not voting to ban the camp, we're voting to support the legislation to ban the camp?
Right.
In the practice.
The practice.
In whatever shape or form that it is.
Right.
All right, I'm going to call a question, I think we had enough discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Anybody need items, need a council action or referral?
Yeah.
Mr. Amrane?
Yeah, I had a call, a couple calls about the number of deer that are just outrageous, I mean, they're just outrageous. We had, in my backyard the other day, I counted, because I knew I was going to bring this up, 15 rocking around the backyard.
We only have 12.
12, yeah, 15. And I had, I had two calls about, they're becoming pests, and they're, and I don't know what we can do, but I guess I would ask the administration to at least find out what may, maybe some other cities are doing to try to thin the herds out a little bit, because I, you know, I don't support going out, and on public property, you can't shoot anything, I would hope, but I don't know how you deal with this, because they're really bad in my neighborhood, really bad.
That's funny, you know, those coyotes are supposed to be taken care of.
Well, I don't think the coyotes, I haven't seen or heard them all for at least a year now, and I think they've moved on, and because they've moved on, the deer population has increased. And the feral cats. And the feral cats, yes, and that's another issue, yes.
We have spray.
People are probably trapping them.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
Jack, are you just asking the administration?
I just ask.
Or you want a motion?
I would like a motion to see if the administration could call some cities and see.
Second?
Second.
Second by Jack, or by Mike, Jack, is there any more discussion?
No.
Mike, any discussion? Anybody else have discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Boo, same sign. Tracy?
I just want to ask council, do you think that we need to make a motion also to ban those practices within the city limits of Kent for the camps? I mean, or just leave that to that?
I was going to say, we probably should run that idea through Hope, I mean, so maybe she can report back, I can send you, you know, let's ask Hope, do we have sort of that, is that enforceable, is it allow, you know, there may be more to it.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to ask her to do that, give us a report.
Future council meeting, anybody? Future council meeting, anybody? Councilman's comment, or did you get it all out?
I think I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Talking about the deer, on my way here, I'm coming up Crane Avenue, right by the soccer field there by St. Patrick's. I look over, and there's probably 10 deer in the front yards on Crane Avenue, eating hostas. So I just thought that was funny that you brought that up.
Yeah, well, the person that called me didn't think it was fun.
We're frenzied on their territory.
Oh, we are.
John?
Well, if you could get enough people in Kent, my son runs Ohio Deer Control, and they spray for deer on the plant so they don't destroy them. I just use the chemical and do it myself. It works, but I think we got more of a problem with squirrels, raccoons, and possums, and more danger, and feral cats than we ever will with deer.
Jack?
Yeah, under comments, I just want to say that the spring cleanup is running so smoothly. Thank, oh my gosh, I put my stuff out on Sunday, and it was picked up on Monday, and my neighbors came over and said, "This is so much better than last year and the year before." So, thanks so much, Melanie.
There's not as much to crash out this year.
Wonderful.
Anybody else on comments? I guess we're the mayor's report. We had several birthdays this month. Dave Brewer was on the sixth, or on the fifth. Melanie Baker on the seventh, Tracy Wallach on the seventh, Jack Amerine on the eighth. Happy birthday to you all.
Some cake?
No cake. This past week, Brad McKay and Melanie Baker and I went up to Brexville because the Tree, we, City of Kent received its Tree City Award for the 34th year. We're the class of 1985, that's something to be proud of. Also, we are celebrating Blue Light Ohio in conjunction with Police Week, which is actually today for the fallen officers that got killed on duty. So I just wanted to make that, that known. If you've been across the Main Street Bridge, you'll see banners up there in support of our police officers. So I have nothing else, nobody else? We're out of here.